Sixty-six, seventy-two.
Are you almost?
They got all of them.
They graduated sixty-six, seventy-two.
It's always good.
They had to be sixty-seven years old.
Uh, at least.
Seventy, about seventy-six.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, call this meeting order is ten, I'm playing with my thoughts later, so that does. Call this meeting order is ten A M. Roll call, sir.
Uh, roll call for, and hearing is Commissioner Wilkinson. Mr. Gallagher.
Your President.
Mr. Mullins.
And this is the high body hearing, we're here, and basically we're open comments.
You, uh, want to go over the rates that you're set at, and then if anybody has public comment, if not, we will.
And this is what I was doing in the middle of the process. Uh, the current, uh, real estate for eighteen percent appraisal was five hundred thirteen, uh, million dollars and a half, five hundred thirteen and a half million. And, uh, the new appraisal was up seven point five percent to five fifty-two and four million dollars. Uh, the political property went up only one point one percent from one eighty-six, one sixty-eight million to one seven million. And, uh, the local utilities actually went down, uh, one percent. And that went down from, uh, two, uh, point six million to two point five nine nine million. And then the state utilities went up, I don't have this percentage, but it went up from eighty-four million to ninety-four million. So that is the appraisal rates. Now, for his evaluation, uh, yes, assessment, watch me on my little chicken. Uh, went from, uh, the county tax levy. Kevin, you want to take over from here on this?
Yeah, we, we, we grew, uh, the southern half grew substantially, the northern half didn't grow near as much. Uh, totally reflected, we need to have a rollback, we were six cents last year on general revenue and that proposal, if you roll it back, uh, for the being compliance with the one point nine percent, which is the CPI that you have to according to Hancock Amendment, would be taking it down to five to seven. So it doesn't sound like much because you went down about three quarters of a penny, but that, it's a, it's a high percentage. Uh, and it's about, uh, all you can do, that's, uh, unfortunately, if you don't have a two or three dollar levy, it would have been, the rollback would have been much more substantial. Road and Bridge goes to two, uh, point two four cents. And Senior Services goes to point oh four eight two. That's the, the rates that have been posted, that's proposed rates, and that's in compliance with the, uh, mandatory rollback.
And I apologize for not having any on the side because it's been a really hectic weekend around here, so didn't get that all covered. Uh, any welcome comments now, I guess, any comments? Kevin?
Unless somebody has, you're rolling it back where you need to be.
Okay, and so by four now. Any other comments or anything? Okay, so we have these proposed, uh, amounts here, so we need to vote on accepting.
No, it's closed here.
In the next meeting, so we'll close out this having had the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing, I'll give this word in writing and then the hearing. And so, we need to adjourn if no one has any comments.
We need to adjourn the tax levy.
Not saying. And, uh, have motion second, any comments? All in favor of closing the tax levy hearing? So yeah, I, I, thank you. Okay, uh, short break, very short break, and then we'll go straight after our regular minutes, regular meeting.
Louis, excuse me, burnt orange, you didn't know it was burnt orange day and you missed the memo.
Okay, okay, let's call this meeting order, it's our regular minutes, our regular meeting, I'm sorry, of our, uh, uh, kind of.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
President.
Commissioner Gallagher.
Here.
Commissioner Mullins.
Right.
Or King President.
Now, we are here, we're called order, and as please stand as you wish.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I was wholly in glory to Lord God, the great architecture of the universe, we contribute to the God that should give us the wisdom, the courage, to do what is always right in your eyes, we pray for this great country, we pray for this great county, pray for its elected leaders, and just give us the knowledge to do your duty. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Thank you so much. Uh, first thing I want to do is amend the agenda. Uh, we want to add a bid opening to the agenda, and that would be for the Martin Road overlay, uh, motion.
I move that we amend the agenda.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Uh, okay, now.
That, you want that first thing when you go into the.
Yes, I've got that as a first item.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're going to, uh, our consent agenda is last week's, uh, regular, uh, meeting minutes. All in favor?
I do.
You need to have motion for approval, agree on this.
Agenda, is that good? And second.
I'll say no.
Okay, all in favor, aye, thank you, now we can move on. Now, this is for the approval of the new tax rate levy, tax levy.
I would move that we keep the same numbers for the tax levy meeting.
You might say.
Got to have it posted.
And have the, have, have it posted. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of accepting those new as our new tax levy? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you so much.
Now we're going to Market Street, is that correct?
Yes. Next item, and this is as per the agenda, amended agenda. I tried to say agenda amended this morning, but anyway. Uh, so we'll have a few minute opening.
Lead belt, right here, anybody who wants to come up after the opening and take picture of, uh, the, uh, other people's bid, that's fine, and then we will take them to the auditor's office, make sure the bids were in compliance, and then we will be awarding the bids.
I know you have. Okay, the people that are interested in this bid opening.
This is from Burn Bowen and Lead Belt Materials, if you want to come up and see them, so you don't have to wait through the whole meeting.
Photograph them.
You can take a photo, whatever. Next will be Crane from Buck Mountain Road.
Crane Services.
Services.
Oh yeah, I don't think we have.
Well, these, these open bids will be attached between the, uh, clerk county clerk's office and the office clerk's office, they'll photograph them.
All right. Next one was Crane.
Crane Services.
And we have no bidder, so.
No bids on the Crane.
The Road and Bridge can negotiate, uh, for that service.
Okay, the next item, then, for bid opening, will be for steel for the Buck Mountain Road Bridge.
Now, this is, very rarely we do this, this is timely, so we're, we have one bid. I'll lay it out here, but I, I would suggest that we let the auditor see it afterwards, but you give me a motion to accept the bids, because it's a timely thing right now that we did.
We need to look at.
Upon, upon the approval of the auditor, that, so that we can then take action upon.
Later in this meeting, then, we can go and come back and, if you, if you're fit your.
What makes it timely, Kevin?
They've got the grid what, right for the steel. And so we, we delay the project another week, and we're getting in the fall here, so anytime you're going to have an overlayment in the fall, then you start worrying about the, the weather dropping under, uh.
And we've already been delayed about two and a half months on this project.
And what we have with that, anything that has to have an overlay, if, if you get, and, and it goes down to below freezing, then they don't, they don't do the asphalt.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda will be seven entries for job changes, and this one is for the reporter deeds office. Start your name, please.
J. Graf Recorder Deeds, uh, I have three requests for staff in our office, or one for a base debt grant increase, and then, uh, two job title changes. Uh, the first one is Becky Coleman, uh, she's a clerk two, and she's begun going to a clerk two, uh, clerk one, or clerk two, in accordance with the pay rates debt plan. Uh, and this is to be in effect, uh, January first, twenty twenty. Uh, Becky came to our office and two thousand fifteen with twelve years of real estate management customer service experience. Uh, she's has five years' experience in recorder deeds office, with her experience and growing knowledge, Becky can help the public with any questions or concerns they may have, uh, regarding the real estate or and or documents pertaining to real estate. A list of her duties, uh, answering telephone calls, taking messages, processing and receiving, and indexing and verifying documents presented for recording, answering the phone, uh, assisting customers with any questions or concerns, balancing and closing out various case transactions, preparing banks, deposits, issuing and recording marriage licenses, uh, reviewing documents to verify they meet the state Missouri statutory requirements, process documents that are electronically submitted for reporting or e-recording, uh, back indexing and verifying old documents so they can be added to our current database, and process email requests and O R O, official records online requests, uh, training on newly purchased equipment, or utilizes training to start a back scanning project, uh, issues certified copies of marriage licenses, land records, and military discharge papers, utilizes the St. Francis County Assessment website to assist customers, and that again is for Becky Coleman, uh, from clerk one to clerk two. The next one is, uh, a job title changer requesting Angela Cowley. Uh, she is currently a clerk three and requesting for her to go to administrative assistant one. This would again would be effective January first, twenty twenty. Angela came to our office in two thousand five with experience from her, uh, employment at preferred land title in Farmington, as well as several years in customer service. She has fifteen years' experience in the recorder deeds office, with her experience and knowledge of land records, Angela has the ability to help the public with any questions or concerns they may have regarding real estate and or documents pertaining to their real estate. Uh, within the last five years, Angela's job duties have increased drastically. Uh, first list is, uh, a few things, uh, taking phone calls, processing mail, uh, receiving, scanning, indexing, and verifying documents presented for recording, assist customers in the office, balancing and closing out previous business days funds, preparing and making bank deposits, issuing and recording, uh, researching marriage licenses and military discharges, uh, back indexing and verifying, uh, process email and online requests, training and usage of new equipment to, uh, scan older documents and port them into our computer system. And then the following duties are, uh, Angela has, uh, taken on in addition to her daily rotation. Uh, she's second line director and supervisor of office activities in the absence of, and in conjunction with the chief deputy and recorder deeds. Uh, keeping record of all fiddler credits of the office, filing and paying out all online requests, keeping employee timesheets and keeping track of leave balances, attending meetings and trainings associated with the office, uh, employee training, notarizing documents, uh, helping balance monthly recorded needs report for auditor, treasurer, accounting clerk, prepares, uh, work schedule for assigned staff, ensures coverage of assigned functions, uh, making spreadsheets for the office use, submitting request, uh, requisitions in chief deputy's absence, and assist in grant writing and preparation, and all general office duties of chief deputy in her absence. And that is for Angela Cowley, uh, requested for a title change from clerk three to administrative assistant one. Uh, the final one is, uh, for Kim Schrum, uh, I'm requesting that her job title be changed from chief deputy two to administrative assistant two. Uh, this would also take effect January first, twenty twenty. Uh, Kim came to our office in two thousand and one after working for a local ti- title company for five years. She came in as a deputy clerk and remained in the position until two thousand fifteen, when the previous chief deputy started her employment. Kim accepted the chief deputy position at that time, when the pay rates debt plan was implemented, she became chief deputy two, which is the title she currently holds. During Kim's eighteen years of employment with the county, her job duties remained almost unchanged, but in the last eight months, besides her daily duties, she has taken on extreme amount of additional duties and responsibilities and continue to have these in the future. These duties include, but are not limited to, first line director and supervisor of office activities in the absence of, and in conjunction with recorder deeds, administrative assistant two reporting deeds, uh, monitors needs for procedural changes and discusses with the recorder deeds, maintains office records for future access and audits, supervises clerical staff, answers supportive questions, and intercedes with difficult customers as needed, uh, signs documents in absence of recorder deeds, maintains office equipment inventory of annual report to the auditor, prepares letters, memos, bits, specifications to other correspondence, grant writing and preparation, purchasing for the recorder deeds office, uh, maintains strict, uh, deadline requirements, preparation of annual office budget, maintains, or, excuse me, attends meetings and training, relates to staff, acts as liaison between the vendor, salesmen, software support, and other offices in the annex, interprets statutes and, uh, department procedures to ensure accuracy, reviews and renews office contracts as needed, uh, prepares monthly and annual financial reports, interacts with all other offices as needed to satisfy customers' requests. In addition to these duties, she also prepares and submits monthly reports to Missouri Department of Agriculture, the Missouri Department of Vital Statistics, prepares and manages monthly billings and collections for remote access users, and is responsible for state federal tax fees and payouts. Those are the three we're requesting, all those would not take effect until January first, twenty twenty.
This is, uh, something we're going to get more requests, some of these at the end of the budget year or the next year.
Oh, several today.
And I think we have a human resources officer employed then. I think that needs to be involved with human resources and not to overwhelm them, but that, um, maybe move that we take this under advisement, and through the, up of the H R person will. We're going to have a whole lot more, really, sort of this, a couple of.
And I think with a, like you said, Commissioner, a H R person, we can also look out and fan out the literary industry and, and see where we're at. Now, keep in mind, we want to give all of our employees a, a raise and, and do the right thing, but at the end of the day, we're in charge of the taxpayers' money, and, you know, even if we're at a low tier, keep in mind that it's warm in the winter and it's cool in the summer, minus the Road and Bridge Department, the Sheriff's Department. But we will work towards this, and our ultimate goal is to bring that wage up. We heard the stories of, uh, parents struggling because they're at a low end, and, and we do, we do need to do the right thing and bring that wage up, and we're going to, let's first, we'll slow this rate down, get other comps, I guess you could say, from other areas outside, and then, uh, tackle it then.
I think we thoroughly agree with you in qualification, we, we have some very good people in our department, but we want to handle everybody paralegally. And so, I heard suggestions here from both people this morning, that we need to involve our new H R person, keep that very heavily involved, and so, what do you phrase, taking it under advisement.
Take this under advisement and act on it, and then later.
And your, your effective date wasn't till the end of your year, so, so we have time, and, uh, do I have a motion?
A motion, I'm second, did you second, yes.
So we'll take that, and we've got two or three other agenda items coming up today on this regular meeting, so I'm thinking that we'll do the same thing.
Okay.
So, uh, uh, any question or comments? Yes, Eric?
Yeah, I'm thinking about the, uh, kind of like the long-term, uh, positioning of the human resource person. Will the human resource person be positioned under the commissioners directly, or will the human resource person be positioned under some other elected official?
It would require an action from us to move it away from the county clerk's office now, so, uh, we haven't discussed that.
Obviously. Okay.
Any comment on that?
No, when you told me we were going to hire somebody, it was under, under the direction, and of course, we work at your, uh, pleasure for our reactions. And you talked about doing a salary survey, uh, of the community, I, I would suspect that the community college would like that, too, things have changed in the last five years, and we need to know where our larger employers' or salaries are, where we're, uh, and we need to recognize skills that are, and longevity, and I think it, it, uh, it probably needs to, but I, I think that human resource person, unless, unless somebody's, they're still going to answer, we made them an office back there, uh, they're, they're going to answer directly in line because they're, they're part, uh, uh, deputy, uh, county clerk, too, so.
Directly in line to who?
To, uh, under all county, they are under county clerk.
Okay, yeah. As it is now, that's the way it is. But, uh, as it is now, that's the way it is, but, uh, we will, uh, act, we'd have to act on to make a change. Any other questions? Do you have a motion to stand second, take this under advisement, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin.
All right, Kevin, England County Clerk, I'm, I'm, uh, going to be another me, too, but it's just what we talked about, I, I've got three requests for three different, uh, title changes. One for Linda, who you all have seen when we did the board equalization, I, I'm not going to go through the whole list of new duties that we've asked you to perform here, but because there's public record and we have it down, uh, that if you hold true, and we're going to do this, we have to recognize the skills and longevity. Uh, because I'm not saying, I know you did a three-year plan to give everybody a quarter a year, but at some point, if our market moves, we have to move with it. We don't have to be the highest in the pay scale, but we have to be competitive in order to keep, uh, competitive people, so I'm asking for Linda to be under that consideration. I'm also asking that Rhonda, Rhonda's been here seventeen years, Linda's been here nineteen years, and, uh, Rhonda, they, they fielded a thousand calls that one week alone, they set up over five hundred appointments besides their, uh, other duties, that whole month they got to go to lunch, two days, and, you know, so those are the type that we're going to continue to have, uh, Julies like that, they need to be recognized, and here's the whole list of new things she's doing, and then Theresa, who's been here over twenty years, that does all the payroll, she's also taken on need verifying, and this would be a good time, though, I, I hope that you consider, I know that's what you're going to say, we need to take it under advisement, but we have to start recognizing these skills in the market. We're also going to have to, instead of pitting people against each other, we have to look who's doing the similar type things in the different departments and recognizing the similar salaries. The only other thing I would ask of you is, we're preparing this budget, because we're doing that all the department, uh, the office holders departments had, have had to do that this, this month, is I would hope that the commission would act on a minimum wage increase, because we are completely out of line there. We're ten, uh, this market, Walmart, McDonald's, uh, Menards, uh, and everybody, just part-time people, uh, are, so we probably need to go about to eleven fifty and then do the salary survey, but we know that end of it's completely out of them. That would only move about four people in our ranks right now, but when you start going out and applying and asking for jobs, even though we've got great, um, uh, other benefits, the benefit packet, people won't even consider you if you're ten dollars, an hour, ten fifty, you see what I'm saying? So, not to mention seventeen U S tool, the ones that started off thirteen, fourteen with benefit package, we have to be more competitive. So even though we may not want to act on these today, we need to get the minimum wage, uh, in the budget up, and then we need to recognize that these people need to be rewarded.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you, Kevin, I think that's why I think the H R needs to be involved in too, because, uh, we need to pay a salary that will attract quality of good people and then to maintain and retain them, we don't want to lose somebody that's good because somebody paid another dollar amount.
And part of that work will be job descriptions.
Sure.
And bring that up.
Only two of the departments have their job descriptions with us after you made that mandatory two years ago.
They're working on it.
They're working, it's a slow process.
Yes, let's keep that going, yeah.
Yeah.
You need to act on that.
Okay, uh, yes, uh, do I have a motion?
I move that we take this under, uh, consideration as well and act on it later.
I'll second.
Uh, any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, okay, that's county clerk, now you're going to tell her about, how far this is.
Yeah, she's similar day, she called me while I go gave you some stats, she wanted to kind of get, because when she started, you all, if you remember, said, let us know what you need to do your job. All right, she's come back, and as she's preparing her budget, she talks about the fact that she has to evaluate this, and she wanted to give, me to give you some statistics. Jefferson County with three times as many people, they, uh, they had thirteen, uh, eleven hundred authorities, we had seven hundred and six this last year. Um, we have delayed and put off a lot of our cases, we have dozens of cases that are going to trial. Uh, we have just a little bit less misdemeanors than they have, we have a little bit, I'm, I'm talking to Jefferson, they have three times as many attorneys. So I would suspect that she's going to come saying we need some, if we really are going to handle, uh, eleven, or eight hundred and eleven, uh, cases, and seven hundred and six felony cases every year, now that position may, we may have to be hiring somebody, and maybe in the future, if those caseloads drop off, once they clear through cycle, we could use attrition to go back down, but I would suspect as we continue to grow, our felony and misdemeanor caseloads will continue to grow. That's what she just wanted to give you a little heads up, she's having to figure out how many on acceptable levels, uh, for prosecutors' cases to handle, uh, and where that number needs to be, and how do we get there in this county? And as I talked to one of the judges the other day, he's expressed the same thing, we're going to have to have more court space, we're going to have to have, you know, because we, we are doing way more disproportionately in this county than what our assignment of judges are, so some of the judges are going to have to come back here and visit here, and they're going to have to have courtroom space, so that's what she wanted to give you a little pre, preview of what she's going to be coming.
How would she budget for that?
Well, I think she'll have to, uh, probably have one more attorney at least, uh, like I said, Jefferson's at fifteen attorneys in the prosecutor department, or five, and probably some more clerical if they do get this caseload.
Well, we, we headed headlong in, they turned this, uh, this particular room into an occasional order, and the rep, whatever facility two can lead into that now. We'll do this room first, because, uh, we've already been doing the wiring, the electronics, and we still have the, uh, uh, the severe website, different things that we'll have to have in this room to run courtroom out of, but that's about the last room.
Well, that's why I encourage the judge to get with the other judges, come over, be a spokesman of where they vision this is going to be the next five years. And where it's going to be as, as we continue to grow, as the caseloads continue to grow, they have to, a lot of the trials don't go, go to trial, but they have to have a courtroom assigned, they can't double book, uh, courtrooms. So, uh, anyway, he's going to come back to you with proposals of where we, and part of that is going to be, how does the prosecution, uh, department?
I've been working, uh, privately with, uh, other, uh, some of the attorneys and various different judges and such, the best of the candidates. So, yes, absolutely, one of them, courtroom case, and we know that, and this is the next item, and then of course, where the road is, which goes to our decision to come up to. So we're moving in those directions, this, right now, nothing's been officially done, but we're moving.
She just wants you to be aware of that, we're going to have to do some.
Yeah, this, okay, and thank you for that, we're going to act on this, we appreciate the update, update on that. Uh, next item is property, uh, tax sale property about invalidation, okay? Uh, next item is property, uh, tax sale property about invalidation, okay?
Hannah Williams, county collector. We had a sale last year, and a person bought some property that was on the books. And when he had his title search done this year, it was discovered that, uh, that property did not belong to the person that was on the books. It had been mapped wrong since nineteen eighty-one. Uh, the property, it, it happened back when Saint Joe sold it to Bond Care. This is a right around Bond Care of Lake. So since all of this has come to light, we need to validate the sale. And, uh, some of the money will be able to recoup from refunding the taxes to go back, but we will need additional funds for the interest and this title search and, uh, things like that. So I just need to validate the sale.
The recommendation of the county clerk, Hannah Williams, I would move that being validated second.
I'm second.
Any questions? If, if Congress say any questions, I'm gonna pull my hands down, but for a second, there are no questions, so. Anyway, uh, no questions, so, uh, have a motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, next item will be a deed for a manager of this property. Hold on, let me tell the microphone, give, start off with your name, please.
Yes, Dason Miller, now from Vandegrift Road, enters a, right in front of me, enter the road there. I've been using for thirty, some years. It's a non-used road, I'd like to put down my deed. Right next to my bar, if you can.
Now, as far as you know, the road is still, uh, a planted road. It has not been abandoned or anything in the past, it's my bet. As far as you know.
It's been abandoned.
It has been.
Yeah, but they moved it.
By abandoned, you mean not been used or legally abandoned?
Huh?
You said they moved the road.
Yes, yes.
So it was abandoned by, by the president.
So we need to vacate the existing road, or we need, we need to?
Yeah, you need to go through the process.
We need to go through the proper process and has a, in the new term of the commission. So sir, if you'll be with me after the commission meeting, I'll be glad to share this, this today, uh, over the steps that you need to do. And if there's no opposition, after that lays a term of the commission, then it'll happen, but it's gotta follow the proper procedure. So if you'll be with me after that.
The terms, the terms is a court. So we'll start, we'll start the new session in October, and we'll start the following session in January, so that's where everything has to be done in there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you bringing it up. And he'll talk to Patrick after today's meeting. We appreciate that.
I'm welcome.
Okay, award a bid overlay on Oakland County Road.
Clay Oakland, uh, San Francisco County Road Bridge. This was a, uh, a bid that we had let out, I believe in March, when we had all of our road projects. And this is just another road that we want to award at this time to Leadbelt Materials. It's on Frederick County Road from the city limits to Possum Hollow Road, approximately one point one miles, and a price of around a hundred and five thousand dollars.
That's an interesting size.
This went through the bid process months ago, and we're just to the point where we want to award it and give them the whole distribution.
I would move that we afford the project, we let off a deal of an amount of a hundred and five thousand dollars.
I'm second.
Okay, any questions, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, could, could we, uh, before we go on to the, you need one more, if you would, uh, accept a motion, we've already, uh, have the auditor look this? Go ahead and award the steel.
Are you ready to award that bid?
Yes, uh, the steel to New Way for the Buck Mountain Bridge project, the only bid we received. And I would move, or I would, uh, ask the commission to, uh, award that bid to New Way Steel for the, uh, reinforcement for Buck Mountain Bridge.
On the recommendation of our superintendent, I would award that bid on the, uh, commission, as the auditor looks at it, gives his approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'm second.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Commissioners, it's, uh, for three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. It's under the state bid, state mandate, so it's our recommendation to approve it.
And, and we wasn't sure if that amount was going to be over the six thousand or not, so we're gonna be having some...
And that's a secret, thank you. Okay, I have any other questions, comments? Have a motion of second to award this bid, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I have anything, so I think, thank you, that's perfect. Okay, we're gonna talk about MAC now. Uh, we, uh, have entered into MAC with agreement, Mineral Air College, we have another MAC, our, uh, Mineral Air College, and, uh, to go with them and a community development law program. And so, uh, there are several advantages to it, and I've been assured that they are not in competition with, uh, existing programs at, uh, Unitec. And they'll be offering several other items too, psychiatric technician, dermatology, certified nurse's assistant, and American Welding Society program. And you see the current, uh, forecast numbers students there. And like they had, that, that's not all the waters we wanna need in the near future. And so, you know, there's a advanced need for that. And in the process of preparing for this meeting, we'll be, I'm running some more behind, was, I've been getting letters all weekend from people, uh, Buck Materials, uh, Lee Mechanical, US Tool, Blackton Lumber, uh, Paramore Glass, Mississippi Line, uh, Air Spotters, and on and on, the people that are full support of this program. They all say that we use waters, we need waters. That's their primary example, but I'm sure that all these other, I assume that all these other people that use these people, this type of training also are supportive of program, of this program. So, uh, do you have anybody else?
Well, I was gonna say, one, one of the, the auditor has, uh, the, these are standard lan, language, it's one of these grants.
Yeah.
Uh, but there are some things that, uh, the auditor wanted to protect the county from, and they entered into a satisfactory agreement with the college. We're happy to have the new president of the college and several of the trustees and of the college here today, so, uh... But that we have a side agreement to make sure we vote knew what our roles would be in the administration of the grant.
And part of that is that the county won't be doing the administration of it?
The commissioners of county is the applicant for the CDPG. And, uh, working with, uh, Ms. Watkins and Dr. Gilgore and with the board, uh, we will be responsible, the county, the auditors, will be responsible for verifying your expenses. And it'll be a pass-through situation as we do with other grants. Uh, but it will also incur expenses for the county in the form of time and labor for Ms. Smith, who will, is the grant executor for us. Also, uh, it will be a, uh, deemed as a single audit now by our external auditors, uh, for the cost of fifteen hundred additional dollars. So that'll be built into our budget to accrue that, uh, extra expense. But, uh, we are in complete, uh, agreement that this should be a pass-through and that this should be approved by the commission.
So other than the, I'm sorry, so other than the, uh, you know, originally, you know, San Francisco County taxpayer money is gonna be used on this, but now you're saying that there's a chance that we're going to actually do an audit, and that will trigger...
Yeah, federal government rules indicate that whenever you do, when your grants reach X amount of dollars, that that is a separate audit from the actual county audit, the annual county audit, so, yeah. That's part of doing business, so.
If we could hear from, uh, the president, the new president of the college, that might be appropriate.
Hi, I'm Joe Gilgore, I'm president of Mineral Air College. Thank you so much for this opportunity to be here. Um, you know, we just really appreciate the support on this project. It's gonna be a really big deal about, uh, for Mineral Air College, but San Francisco County and the region is, uh, we're very excited about what it is. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions as well, or if there's any questions.
I have a question. Um, I don't know who the welding businesses are locally, but do we know if any of them are felon-friendly?
I didn't hear the question.
I wonder if any of the welding businesses, uh, because you're driving towards, you know, getting people employed, if it's going to be felon-friendly businesses, meaning that they'll hire people with a felony? And that's a concern, well, that, no, that's a concern because low, a lot of our lower-income families will have felons in that family, so I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for that.
I, I know of one, and that's Blackton Lumber, you know, they have always been very good at hiring people that have, uh, a criminal record, you know? They'll get people a chance.
Right, and that's why I was just wondering, how many of those businesses?
And they were on the list of people that were deported, so.
Uh, in this particular grant, uh, we, we give priority to all of those low to moderate income participants that want to apply.
So it wouldn't matter whether or not they had, you wouldn't take that into consideration, whether or not?
No, not for, not for this particular program.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Because there are places where we can place them.
Okay.
So typically, the only time that comes into play is if it's, uh, for instance, like a pharmacy technician or brand, they're not gonna be able to be employed if they have that felony, so, uh, just things like that. It's the one time that we discriminate on felony offenses, is we know that they will not be employed without that bill.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, that was not a requirement of the grant.
Uh, what was not?
Hiring of felonies.
No, it was not, yeah.
How much is this grant for?
Uh, the grant's for four hundred thousand dollars, and the total project is eight hundred and thirteen thousand, so four hundred thousand of it is from the CGPG grant, seventy-five thousand from Mineral Air College, and the rest is in NAP credits and support by local industries and businesses that are gonna help.
And since this is a pass-through, does this mean the federal government ultimately is the source, or who's the source of money?
It's, huh?
Oh, uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate you. I still think that you need to wear a backpack more often. We, uh, okay, we have a motion on several resolutions to be done, and, uh, yeah, there they are, the list of resolutions. How do you wanna handle these individually?
You have to handle them individually. These are our boilerplate from the federal government. Anytime they issue a grant, you have to say that you're practicing fair housing, even though the county doesn't do housing. Your, uh, uh, the excessive force prohibition, and then the intent to seek funding resolutions are all have to be in, included in, in the act.
Can you go back to that one slide, though? I don't think we touched on it.
No?
Yes, sir. Uh, we, we didn't, we didn't talk.
You're talking about an adult program.
Yes.
You're talking, you're gonna focus on adults. You don't recruit high school students.
Correct.
We are, yes, we have no intention or plan to actively recruiting high school students. We are looking primarily, and our employers have asked us to primarily train just adults, because that's what they're doing in their businesses.
Something else you brought up is the employers that you read a list of that would like to participate, they can in some way in the NAP. Neighborhood System Program is, is a, a tool that's set up to give tax credits for these companies to participate so they can have their people trained. So there is some opportunity for some of the companies in this area to, uh, get two things now, get people trained and get some tax credits for helping with it.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, uh, I was...
Should this all come to be, is it gonna be a day class, or will you have evening classes as well available for people?
I'd be a variety, but it'd be based on demand, where the students are available for, or instructors are available.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, now, uh...
When will this be kicked off?
Well, uh, the, uh, government hasn't said exactly when the money would be issued, so we're hoping by December that the, uh, the grant could be implemented. Uh, the building doesn't take very long to put up, so we would hope we're off in program in the fall of twenty twenty.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, do we need a motion on each resolution?
Okay.
Okay, then, uh...
The motion would be to apply with... Right, apply with the federal fair housing.
Okay, any motions, touch on those that?
He's second.
Okay, I have a motion to, uh, certify the fair housing with, uh, departments, second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments on fair housing? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, aye. Uh, next motion would be for excessive force federal official.
Right, that you, you move that you, uh, are in compliance with federal guidelines on, uh, excessive force ownership. Do you show them that?
Show them. And I have to have a second.
I'll second.
Yeah, all, any questions, comments on, uh, excessive force?
Does anybody really know what that's about? I'm interested, I'm curious, uh, sounds interesting.
Put down what is excessive force defined, how legal.
I don't have an exact definition of that, but, uh, I'm, I'm sure there, uh, uh, there is some laid out in, in law. And, uh, we have policies at the jail, and with our law enforcement, uh, we're having excessive force, you know, dealing with criminals and with the public.
And we, and we have that here, but it is the federal guidelines that you must comply with. And our county sheriff, that's...
Any other second, or any other question? I have a second, and a motion of second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Now, the next resolution, the intent to seek federal funding, and that's something that we are in compliance with the, uh, national...
Federal rules on seeking funding from projects.
Take some of the motion, okay? Okay, I have a motion second, any questions? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're done with that. Next regular meeting, now, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Wait, wait a second.
Guess what, addition to the program.
You have eleven twelve. Eleven twelve is, uh, uh, our county assessor. And it's on, uh, part-time personal property, and the step increases job changes. And then that would be for the, the good, after that.
Kevin, are you finished with us?
Yes.
All right, okay. Going back to the print of this agenda, or then the slides? Do we have a fellow here, Mr. French?
What's that?
What's one?
Your assessor's got two, two, uh...
Yeah, okay, I'm ready to go to that, okay. Uh, item eleven, would be additional part-time personnel property, personal property clerk and assessor, I think this...
Commissioner?
Yes.
I think the, uh, group from the, uh, college would like to be excused, because they used to raise their hands. So can I be excused, and so they're wanting to get out of here, so.
And we appreciate you supporting us. Thank you. I told them, I told them, do you want more information about? I wanna go to that, we're always through the college, but what I'm saying is, we're supporting us, but we are part of the college. We have, we have...
You, you have the res, you have the resolutions in there.
No, we, we did that, so, thank you all for attending, we thank you. If you want to say that you, all your words, any agreements? Okay, now, uh, I'm gonna talk...
Thank you, gentlemen, Dean R. and assessor. We have five, I believe, requests, three of those would be, uh, one of them will be in twenty twenty, taking their place, and if you have any requests. The other two are due to opening to, uh, folks who's, who, who, if they're retired and left. Uh, one of them, uh, is the change of title for Vicki Keller to become Personal Property Director, which would have salary increase for that, and we, under that request, we would want to readdress that in January, depending on how, as we did with our real estate director last year, uh, as far as how quick she can take up on that. There are a lot of additively, that Vicki's been there for sixteen years, I believe, and worked in personal property for years, but the changes that are going on with the software and especially with the commercial personal property shooting, we've never been involved in that, and it's a big, uh, task to take on, so that's why the request is there. And because of those folks that have left, the salaries are already in our budget for this year, so we're not asking for any additional money for salaries and straight taxes. The other one that we would ask to have a, uh, I guess, hold on, this time would be on Brandon Hale's new job title to Phil Fraser, one slash, Blood Claimant Administrator. She is now taking on that load, uh, effective immediately, and even going to classes.
Now, is this item, the second item of your...
Those two are the ones that I'm really presenting today that need to...
We have on a separate agenda item, so let's talk about, uh, the, uh, person to talk about, I'll be right there.
Okay, this would be the personal property.
Number eleven, and that's, uh, everybody else up there has number eleven, but it's part-time personal property clerk.
Okay, that one is for January. We have a young, a woman that retired early that we are requesting to come back in next year to help with our personal property editing and scanning. Uh, due to, uh, a movement that's going on, everybody seems to be changing chair. We have four young ladies working in the front, we will have three after we make our change. So we're asking, uh, to hire this young lady that has fifteen years of experience in, to come in and help as a temporary part-time development officer.
Okay.
And that's a, that's one that we're taking into consideration with the HR personnel, so that'll be a thought on.
So that will be taken under advisement?
So there's no urgency?
No urgency, because that's a January decision, January through May happen.
But you, we make this, uh, take this under advisement, and then we're gonna, you know, thank you.
Thank you so much, and I have a second question. Any questions, comments? Yeah, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Dan, now, I, uh, the next item, Dan, would be for the step increase, job changes or pay increase for the staff, assessor.
For which what?
Says staff, but, uh, thank you for talking about that.
Mr. Hale?
Oh, Brandon?
Yes.
Okay, that's for the Floodplains Administrator position that he's taking on. Uh, Brandon has been with us a little over a year, uh, due to his, uh, doing a great job in, in the field. I was looking at who would best fit this position, and with his accuracy and his, uh, detail in his reports, I felt that he would be the one that we would choose for that, he has accepted that, has already been two different classes, and so I think there is gonna be a typo, and I'll need to correct that on the salary adjustment, which I can get with you later on that, but he is gonna be now Field Fraser One slash Floodplains Administrator, and again, depending on, uh, how in-depth this gets, because he's involved with, uh, emergency management director, I believe, he came against it, he wanted to talk to Brandon, so if any catastrophe happens, occurs in this town, my guy is gonna be involved in that with, with Dan Duncan. So, uh, we want to readdress that salary next year, because we need to increase it a lot. At this point, we're establishing a number, and we want that to take back to the meter, on the next, on the next paper.
This one's, this is the top of the, this is a, a very important position. In the past, previous years, it was handled by the county clerk, uh, we talked to our road and bridge guys with the amount of work that they already do, they couldn't devote any time to the, so this is where we're at, it's a much needed position. And do you have any figures for us, Dan?
Over the front of your set, the typo, the amount of...
The amount that we're going to is a dollar too high, yeah, we're sort of looking at a dollar and a half, that's, uh, we'll, uh, and to readdress that after next year. I have asked this question, uh, are you gonna be getting with him on your bridge work on future, for those permits that he needs to...
I believe this position is mandatory too, if you're in the, in FIP, it requires you to have a Floodplains Administrator.
Yeah, on the recommendation of the assessor I'm due, that we, uh, change the title on, uh, Brandon, which is last, Hale, to be Field of Fraser slash Floodplains Administrator, and change his salary as requested here for thirteen fifty to fifteen dollars.
Okay, now, I have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions?
You know, if, you would be creating, uh, there are other counties, and I'll give you an example, uh, St. Jimmy County, obviously, I understand here, there's the Seven Rivers, a little bit different, but still, there's a huge amount of education, the center hours have been less than ten, so still, thirteen fifty to fifteen dollar, or, yeah, fifteen dollar an hour, still not creating another position personally, I don't, that's, that's still low, but I would, I would, that's not personally...
Any questions, what do you have?
Well, commissioners, for the past forty, fifty-two minutes, often all we've, we've heard about you considering the reevaluation of these salaries, and I would think with this one, you should take this under advisement as well.
Uh, my reason was that, yeah, but the job is being done by this fellow now, right? Uh, so it's not really a projection, so I, maybe I misunderstood your...
You didn't misunderstand me, I said what I said.
Well, I didn't understand what you were getting at.
And you ought to take it under advisement.
I don't have a problem with that. I do, don't we take his request under advisement, is that okay?
I mean, I, I'm, you just asked for comments, and that's my comment, I, I don't vote, obviously, so...
Well, then, because I don't have a second.
I, I, well, we're required to have a Floodplains Administrator, I understand, uh, your doctor's questioning, but we have to have one required by law, so...
He's been skating for a long time.
I agree, if you're on a second motion.
Okay, uh, I have, what motion you want me?
I already made, you're, uh, that's, uh, payable now, it's, it's never, yeah, effective now. Yeah, effective now.
It should be in the next payroll.
I'll second.
Okay, now, any questions, here?
Yeah, I would say that if we could fulfill that role for an extra dollar fifty an hour, I'd applaud that commissioners would go ahead and approve it today.
Any other comments, questions? Uh, this is something that we're, one of those items we've been dragging our county into the next century, it's long, for a long time. Uh, we've needed this for decades, yeah?
I can understand the thought, it's all right, his question, I can understand that, it's just, uh, a little bit...
It's, uh, it's becoming more of an issue all the time, with the libel of the situations in person. For instance, uh, if you raise a bridge eight inches on elevation, you have to go in and study how that affects every part above it, and that's part of Floodplains, that's part of the law, so it's just, those things are coming up and make, we keep being unfortunate.
And I like that as we continue to move into our first-class county status, this is just another requirement that is being placed upon us to adhere to.
Okay, uh, any questions, comments? I have a motion and a second to make this effective now, to go from thirteen fifty to fifteen dollars per hour for, uh, help in the name...
Brandon Hale.
Brandon Hale, thank you. Uh, well, I don't know where the questions come from, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, every day.
Okay, now, I think that's, yeah, well, if you... There's more, there's more, okay?
Uh, the next one I would address is just, is one that needs, was like, I'd like to have addressed today, is the, uh, promotion to personal property director from, uh, clerk three for Vicki Keller, the vacancy, uh, in the personal property director's office. There's an amount of money that's being passed for Vicki Keller that's way below what was being paid to the first-hand property director part of this, and we have it in the budget already, and so this is the title for her to become a supervisor, and no longer, but to become supervisor, which is to have that addressed again after the first year, towards the dollar amount for the, the salary. She has a lot to take on, I hope she stays there, but, uh, you know, it is a heavy vocabulary in that position, it's a personal problem, it isn't a same person.
Yeah, but I'll be effective on the next thing, Robert.
Yeah, I did jump on that end.
Yes.
It's under step eleven.
Yeah, step twelve.
Step twelve, rather.
Basically, I'm not asking for a new position, I'm not asking for a higher increase to over what the personal property, previous personal property director was making. The salary, we are seeing quite a bit less than that individual, so my idea is to be in the budget for the rest of this year and for the future for that position.
You're filling in the position of the...
I'm refilling the position, I'm just asking.
And the impact of salary would be changed next year, if there's going to be...
If, 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 if so approved next year, I'll bring it back for you and let you know what additional, uh, tasks are being added on to you, the technology, the bank, or...
They don't have to approve your fellow physician, do they?
Right, do, because it's an appointment, it's an appointment, it's a appointment for being appointed to the, uh, director of personal property.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, we can take it under advisement.
Okay, yes, let's take it under advisement.
We take this under advisement.
Okay.
And I'll second, is that it?
No.
I have two, I have two more that I'm asking take under advisement for January, uh, to be promoted to clerk three due to additional duties that are being taken on, and one with nineteen years' experience in, and one with, uh, well, who has been there before and came back again, we're not counting the previous time that I started here, but, uh, those, that one person will be moving into Vicki Keller's firm, real estate, taking on projects that she's never done before, the bank or co-venture right now, so it's totally new responsibility.
But again, that'll look for an under advisement for January, and that's all I have.
Well, I move to take, just, those two requests under advisement, and yeah, we need to get the HR person involved, this, I know the step level plan has some restrictions of how often your job, content, title can change, your, your service, or I'm not even clear on what that, they will. So I move that we put your, his, uh, in the holding, I'm gonna do that.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, take, putting those items under, uh, evaluation, whatever the word is here, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I think. There we go, next regular meeting. All right, we're, okay, now, let's, uh, we'll be here next Tuesday, but, uh, we're shut down on Labor Day, the day before, so to your attention, items have to be turned down Friday, from that, previously applied, and I think, so that's the change on that one. Okay, uh, other bids, anybody that corresponds? Public comments? Any departmental reports?
Commissioner, I want to reiterate what the county clerk said, two years ago, you, uh, passed or mandated that the, uh, office holders submit the qualifications, job descriptions of their employees. In two years, there's been two office, offices that have submitted that. I don't understand how you can work or justify any change of titles and/or an increase of any pay adjustment unless you have descriptions of what the employees are doing.
Yeah, that's great, but that step level plan has, if her qualifications or duties are supposed to, uh, the job descriptions are very much necessary, and we, I don't know, we're gonna get them, make, do that, we can't make them, they have to make them in their office, the executive.
Well, it's the structure of the government, we can't go in and go, this clerk or whoever, we're not even...
I can't believe we can't do that.
We can't do it through the budget.
We don't want to go down that road.
No.
That's heavy, that's being heavy-handed, and, uh, you can say whether it's happened in the past or not, that's the past, but we don't want to go down that road, we go to the executive officials, say, you will do this, or we...
Well, I think we can remind them that it was, uh, requested several years ago, and they need, we will say why.
You have a program, do you want to do that?
To make a point of that. Just taking a topic that we have all the, like, requests for the job. How about your part?
We have a listing of all the departments that have not, uh, provided...
That was submitted for a year.
No, it doesn't go to us, it goes to county clerk.
I think he said that there's two that have that.
Two have.
Yeah. The auditors have done it.
Direct some attention to that and see what they...
If the auditors done it, the assessor's office has done it, and the county clerk's office has done it.
Bring it to attention, I agree.
Okay.
Charlie has a question.
Yes, Charlie?
If it's a requirement, but it's not avianated.
Charles, I, I didn't underhear you.
I said, if it's a requirement, that's not being avianated, if you ask them to, uh, to meet the requirements.
Yeah.
Correct, there's no doubt about that, but I, we can't, for them to jail, they'll do it, I mean...
Maybe, uh, hold fine.
That was a little bit of a common sheet here, no, we're, we need to get, but, because, like you said, it's...
Well, it should make your job easier, commissioners, when you get the request for a pay increase. I mean, it's a tool for you.
Okay, uh... Yeah, any other departmental reports? Okay, now, hey, thank you, Lloyd, I appreciate it, and, uh, I appreciate it. Uh, okay.